Okay, apologize for the delay. We'll reconvene our meeting. Greg, you want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We have a very special, special recognition this evening. Chief, do you have, you want to come forward?
Chief, you want to say a few words?
You want to say a few words, Chief, first? Sure.
Early in May, we had an incident at Bridgen High. And I just want to say, before I tell you what happened, truly, the measure of great character is someone who, in a crisis, is willing to stop everything and take action. And Julie Combs is one of those people. We had a gentleman stopped at the light who went into full cardiac arrest. Julie sprang into action, and she and another motorist pulled the gentleman out of the car and started CPR. Fortunately, Julie is a nurse, and they were successful in keeping this gentleman alive until the medics got there. The medics transported him, and I'm glad to say he was released from the hospital this week. So, we have some recognition for Julie.
So, we have a proclamation here for you this evening, and I will read this on behalf of City Council. Whereas on Friday, May 8, 2015, a motorist waiting in traffic at Bridgen High Streets experienced sudden cardiac arrest; and whereas immediately Ms. Julie Combs and another nearby motorist reacted to the emergency by calling 911 and assessing the victim's condition; and whereas finding no pulse, Ms. Combs immediately began cardiopulmonary resuscitation measures; and whereupon, arrival at the scene, responding Washington Township Fire and EMS and Dublin Police found Ms. Combs and another motorist administering emergency CPR to the victim in the roadway; and whereas the Washington Township EMS professionals took over treatment and then transported the victim to a local hospital where his pulse and breathing were restored; and whereas the selfless and immediate reaction by Ms. Combs was instrumental in the saving the life of this citizen. Now, therefore, I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby commend Ms. Julie Combs and Washington Township Fire and EMS responders for their lifesaving efforts rendered on May 8, 2015, and hereby proclaim Friday, June 12, as Heart Heroes Day.
Very good.
I just wanted to recognize, we have two of the firefighters that were there that day, firefighter Jim Cullinson and Gene Miller, who also were obviously instrumental in saving this victim. So, thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to citizen comments, and we do not have any this evening.
No one has signed in.
And that'll bring us to the consent agenda, then. Is there anybody, any council member have any item they'd like to have removed? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And?
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesey-Zurker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules of order to address both ordinances, 35-15 and 36-15, together as they are related. Is there a second?
Second.
And?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesey-Zurker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I need to recuse myself on the next two items. So, I have to go with the pen, too, by the way.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Okay, you want to read the titles?
I'll read the title. "Rezoning approximately 152.2 acres from our rural district and our one restricted suburban residential district to PUD Plan Unit Development District for the potential development of the site with up to 185 single-family lots and approximately 76 acres of open space on the west side of Avery Road, north of the intersection with Belvedere Green Boulevard." And "Ordinance 36-15 amended is authorizing the city manager to enter into an infrastructure agreement with Davidson Phillips for the Riviera Development."
And we have a staff report. Ms. Husak?
Thank you so much. Good evening, members of council, mayor. I just have a very, very quick update here on both of the ordinances that we're looking at tonight together. And the most significant change between what you saw at the first reading and tonight is the proposed development plan, which has changes in the lot configuration. At the first reading, which is the plan there on the top left, there were two lots, 41 and 40, within both Sections 2 and Section 1, that council requested to have the applicant take another look at in terms of relocating them for increased tree preservation. So, the applicant has been able to eliminate both of those lots by slightly decreasing the size of the lots there on the very northern border, and then also on the western boundary of Section 1, to make sure that those lots still meet the width requirement, which is 100 feet in width, but decrease each of them slightly to fit one other lot in both of those areas to eliminate those two previous proposed lots to increase tree preservation. There were also some questions at the first reading regarding what the definition is of a landmark tree. And while our zoning code doesn't have specifically a definition for a landmark tree, typically, those are the ones considered to be 24 inches or greater in height, in depth, I'm sorry, at breast height. And those are the ones that when applicants request tree waivers are sometimes permitted to be replaced on a tree-by-tree basis as opposed to an inch-by-inch basis. So, I just wanted to clarify that definition. And then quickly, here is the proposed development plan as it is before you tonight. We are continuing with a proposal of 185 single-family lots at a density of 1.22 dwelling units per acre, still meeting a majority, if not all, of the requirements of the Conservation Design Resolution with 50 percent open space and reserves that are in, there's 13 reserves in all, with 76 acres in total of open space provided as part of this development. I'm here, very quickly, the three sub-areas that are proposed, with Subarea A having the largest lots, Subarea B having what we would consider more of a medium-sized or more typical single-family lot, and then Subarea C, there in purple, being a development pattern more geared toward an empty nester-type homeowner that might want less maintenance and maybe less stairs for more of a ranch or a story-and-a-half unit on those lots. And then real quickly, here again, the open spaces to be owned and maintained by the City of Dublin. All of the open space provided within the development are to be owned by the City of Dublin, but 56 acres or thereabout is supposed to be maintained by the city. We had our park staff take a look at what kind of maintenance responsibility that would entail for the HOA for the 25 acres that is intended to be owned and/or that is intended to be maintained by the HOA, and that came about to $325 per year for each of the homeowners within the development. And then here is just a breakdown of the maintenance responsibilities of each of the reserves. We also wanted to point out the open space connections that this proposal provides, specifically with the Conservation Design adherence of this development to the resolution, providing the 50 percent open space that the resolution calls for. We are able to provide an important connection between open space and parkland to the south, which is Avery Park, Westbury Park, and then Bishop's Run Park, all the way over there to one of the Metro Park areas just on the south side of Brand Road, and then providing that connection along the stream corridor in the Shannon Glen Park through what is proposed to be open space areas within the Riviera Development, and then to the northwest in the Tartan West. So, you can kind of see on this map that planning created those open space corridors that are provided as part of this proposal. So, with that, we have three actions that we're requesting of council tonight. One is a vote of the Ordinance 35-15, which is including 13 conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of which dealt with the elimination of asphalt as a permitted driveway material, which, what is in front of you tonight, the applicant has included asphalt as a permitted driveway material. So, one of the conditions would be changed from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I included in the memo a little bit of research that staff had conducted, and we found one development within the city that eliminates asphalt as a permitted driveway material. All the other ones that are regulated by the city in terms of driveway material would refer to the zoning code, which would permit asphalt. We're also requesting a vote on the preliminary plat, which is included with the rezoning ordinance, and then the infrastructure agreement, Ordinance 36-15, excuse me, also recommending a vote of approval. And with that, I am here, my team in the background is here as well, engineering, as well as public works and parks, if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Council questions?
With respect to the asphalt, you say that's permitted by our code?
Asphalt is, yes.
Of recent neighborhoods that have been approved, can you think of one where asphalt was utilized, other than the example that was given to us in the staff report?
So, yeah, we found only that Deer Run subarea that eliminated. All other recent and even older planned developments that we've approved, that have been approved through the city, would permit it as a driveway material. So, Tartan West, Tartan Ridge, Oak Park, Celtic Crossing, Wellington Place, Wellington Reserve, Bishop's Crossing, Post Reserve, in terms of what they got approved through a city enforcement mechanism, they would all permit asphalt. Now, whether or not they have HOA restrictions, different differentiating that, we would not be aware of those.
Maybe the question needs to be asked a different way.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's on me. So, I mean, I'm familiar with all these neighborhoods. What I don't see are asphalt driveways. So, whether, you know, it's presented as an option to the homeowner, but, you know, I believe, you know, that the majority of homeowners don't want an asphalt driveway. If you've had an asphalt driveway, I've had one in the past, and would not have moved to a neighborhood where the homes had asphalt driveways. So, in this particular instance, I guess I would say to my colleagues on council that the staff, of course, recommended no asphalt driveways. The Planning and Zoning Commission, I think ultimately was unanimous, if not near unanimous. I think that some commission members felt more strongly about it than others, but, you know, from what I read in the record, it appeared to me that the majority of the commission members were strongly opposed to asphalt driveways. So, you know, this is not the most critical thing in this application, but, you know, because it was mentioned, because it was one of the conditions, I would be opposed to allowing for the asphalt driveways. I have some other comments to make later, but I just, since that was the last thing that Claudia mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, I, with respect to that, it kept coming back, and the Planning Commission kept saying no. And it was very important to the Planning Commission that the asphalt be eliminated. So, for whatever that's worth, and that was the condition that was passed on from Planning Commission to council the first time. So, that was something that was very important to Planning Commission.
Thanks, Claudia.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions, Claudia. In your memo, you talked about the tree preservation, 40 and 41 being brought up by council. And you also mentioned that architectural standards were brought up. Has there been anything changed that addresses the architectural standards?
And the applicant can maybe speak to that a little bit more. The only two significant changes that were made as part of the architectural standards was the increase of the width of walkways from the public walkway to the houses was increased to four feet in width. And then the asphalt change was made to include it, even though, like Ms. Haley stated, that the Planning Commission was pretty unanimous in terms of not preferring that material.
No other changes were made?
Correct.
And maybe I just didn't follow it. The different trees that had people concerned, how many of those are still preserved, and how many of them aren't with the new configuration, if you know the answer to that question? It says that it is more sensitive, too, or something. The current proposal is more effectively preserves the significant trees. I'm wondering, what does the word "effective" mean?
There was one or two, I can't think of the top of my head, exactly, there was a significantly sized maple, I believe, that was preserved as part of the relocation of those lots. That was definitely above the landmark size of trees.
Lot 41 in particular?
Mm-hmm, yes.
There were three trees on that lot.
In total, and one was extremely large, yes.
And that one's now saved?
Yes.
Or all three of them are now saved?
All three of them are saved.
This is the one that you addressed those at the last meeting?
Right.
I believe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Are we coming back around, or is this my only shot here?
No, I mean, we'll have, keep it open till everybody has their questions.
Okay, all right. That's all for now, thank you.
I have a specific question for, I think, probably Jennifer, with regard to the open space. We had the Public Services Committee meeting, and we talked about city-owned open space versus being publicly maintained, privately maintained. What would it take, or what sort of scenario would we have if we took the open space in this neighborhood, in keeping with our theme of public maintenance for public open space, to dedicate the open space that's going to be privately maintained and have it owned by the Homeowner Association versus the city?
We would simply have to change the text. Right now, it just provides for that delineation. You could change that in the rezoning, and then it would be conveyed through the deed restrictions.
You're suggesting they take the whole piece over?
No, 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 no. There are, in the slide that's in our material and that Claudia put up, there is, there are the gray, I guess, open spaces that are, correct me if I'm wrong, Claudia, but those are going to be, according to the proposal as it stands now, owned by the City of Dublin, privately maintained.
Correct.
So, rather than the City of Dublin owning those, we would convey, or the developer, I guess, would convey those to the HOA, so the HOA would own and maintain them so that it takes the city responsibility and puts it with the city and the private, and puts it with the private. Just, that was...
Are there tax issues with that?
Yeah, well, they're, yeah, they're going to have to pay taxes in that case.
Versus a city would not have to?
Correct.
And that's how many acres, I mean, that could be some serious dollars.
It's 25 acres.
Yeah.
Just about.
25 acres of vacant land? What is that?
You know what we've been paying for lately? It'd be a fair amount, I would say. You want to venture a guess, anybody?
I would not.
Amy, I wonder if we could defer this decision until council, you know, ultimately decides the issue that the Public Services Committee discussed most recently?
Right, I'm just wanting to know for tonight's purposes if we're going to approve this, what that would mean? Would it be done now versus?
It's, right now, it's in the text, and it divides up who owns what open space. We could put in a condition that says, you know, if the developer agrees that we are reviewing this, and we will, if there's a change in the policy, the text will accommodate that revision. I don't know if the developer's amenable to some type of condition that would maintain that flexibility on the open space ownership.
To sort of follow up on that, though, somebody said, I think Claudia did, that the per-household cost would be $325. Is that a build-out, though, of the whole, that it's, you know, which we're not anticipating for several years? So, the Homeowner Association would have a much higher cost to them until they had total build-out?
Right, so there would be a little bit of a turnover at some point, at a certain percentage of build-out, the Homeowners Association would be responsible. That wouldn't most likely be at 50 percent. It's, we're seeing it more in the 75 to 80 percent of build-out when that turnover does happen.
How is that governed, Claudia? Does it just sort of, the developer decides, oh, it's 80 percent, it makes sense now, or is that a city thing that's regulated by us?
No, it's going to be, the conveyors will be in the deed restriction, and so it will be controlled by the developer. But we have the approval of the declaration, so we can see the declaration before it's filed for those deed restrictions.
Typically, how has that happened in all the other neighborhoods that we've had that this is?
Yeah, I would defer to how they typically do it in their neighborhood, which I think is most specific.
To make this easy, the developer pays all expenses for maintaining the site on a pro-rata basis. If there are 185 lots and 10 of them are sold, then the developer pays 175 lots worth of maintenance, and the other homeowners pay only 10. And so, we, the developer, are paying the bill the whole way until all of the houses are sold, every single one of them. In terms of running the Homeowners Association, our declaration and the bylaws of that Homeowners Association generally provide that 75 percent of the homes, when 75 percent of the homes have been transferred, those lots have been transferred, then those homeowners then run the association up, until then, the developer does.
Who else?
The other thing I want to question about, Amy, not that you were suggesting this, but the land being owned by the homeowners, besides the tax issue and other things that we would be learning about before we would ever do that. I would also be concerned about the Homeowners Association decided to change what that land was. I mean, you know, could they, would they have to go through a zoning process, then? Or what would be the process that they would have to do to decide?
Well, for this particular open space, it's pretty specifically delineated what the permitted use is in each reserve. And so, they wouldn't be able to develop it for houses unless they came back for a rezoning. So, it's pretty limited, especially with the specificity in this text.
I did just a quick math on this. At $100,000 an acre, I would estimate it'd be about $106 a household. And of course, if it's $200,000, you can double that or so forth, just to put it in perspective for you.
Well, yeah.
Well, $100,000 an acre.
You know, I got some, I got some comments. I was wondering how we ended up with the $300, $325 a year HOA dues, because actually, I had the good fortune to look into Tartan West's HOA fees, and theirs run very similar to Merrifield. They're $850 annually for 376 homes, for a total of $319,600. And that sort of keeps in mind, or is rather equal to Merrifield, who's at 300, or $861 per household. I thought, you know, after looking at some of our price breaks downs, too, that our utility bills for driving the pump, or whether the city handles this or the HOA handles this, was not anywhere near the real expenses, because I learned from Tartan West that there were utilities, electrical services that support their pond pumps and irrigation systems and aerators, are $45,000, and our city estimate was $19,000. So, their total support for their open space is $240,500.
One of our assumptions was, and again, none of this has really been finally developed in terms of getting final development plan approval, but, so there's no stormwater functioning ponds within any of the HOA-to-be-maintained open spaces. There is one pond in this reserve here along the northern boundary, but it's a natural occurring water feature along the stream there. So, we would not have looked at aerators or any kind of electricity to feed or maintain those pond areas. So, our assumptions was based on one pond that does not have a stormwater function, and then 100 percent of the land to be owned by the HOA and maintain, sorry, maintained by the HOA to be mowed and routinely maintained in terms of turf with an entry feature there along the Avery Road frontage. With this, the cost we were looking at was $60,000.
Yeah, I was looking at this as infrastructure costs that we might estimate that our taxpayers would be liable for on maintaining the other ponds. And that's what I was very interested in.
Okay. Greg, go ahead.
It's timely to ask this question now, but I know there's been some designation between a neighborhood park and a community park. In some places, we have community parks; in some places, we have neighborhood parks. Is there anything that will show to the rest of the community that these reserves are community parks? Are they neighborhood parks? Or is that, does that distinction come into play anywhere?
Fred, you're going to come up here, right?
I guess, is what I'm getting, is if the city owns it and is maintaining it, shouldn't it be me to treat?
I think in the assumption of what is to be appropriately maintained by the city, that definitely goes into account.
Really, our, when we differentiate between the two, it really has to do with more of how we, our practices, how we program or don't program parkland. So, for instance, when we classify something as a neighborhood park, there is no such thing as reservations or rentals. And the community parks are the opposite. They, if you, we have shelter houses in the community park, and they're for rent for family reunions or whatever. Another difference is, within the neighborhood settings, if there happens to be any type of courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, in the neighborhood settings, we do not like them. Where in a designated community park, that's where you'll find your lit courts at. So, within this subdivision, I don't, obviously, whether they're labeled a neighborhood park or a community park or just open space, the general public is welcome there, period, whether you live there or not. It's really just kind of how we treat the given land masses, this whole community neighborhood thing, as, you know, examples, as I've given. And typically, again, community parks, there is some special, you know, the athletic fields are one type of a community park, but also Amberly, given its access to the river, its formalized access to the river, and the fact that we have a pavilion that by design is to house larger social events, larger than your, just your picnic, lunch type of event. So, back to this, you know, I think we would view it by our definition, all of it at neighborhood park, but in reality, kind of that, the big areas, the stream corridor areas, really, you wouldn't see any formalized development as you would in a typical neighborhood park with playgrounds and courts. That whole area wouldn't really be conducive to that type of a development. So, Greg, I don't know if I really answered a question or not, but I at least kind of said what, how we view the terminology.
You did, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none? We do have, we have some public testimony on this. There's one.
Mr. Mess.
There's Mr. Mess. Well, I think we hear from the public, wouldn't we? Yeah, there may be some questions that come up there. Welcome. You state your name and address for the...
Good evening. I'm Mike Mess. I live at 8823 Vineyard Haven Drive, which is adjacent to the north side of Riviera. I am, again, speaking tonight on behalf of the Coalition of Nine HOAs, who represent more than 3,800 households in Dublin. Since we presented our views at the last City Council meeting on May 18, purpose of our presentation tonight is to reiterate and summarize our position. With respect to Riviera, our goal is that it remains green. We believe that the use of Riviera for a parkland or a nature preserve is the highest and best use for the community. Thus, we urge the City Council to give serious consideration to the options we outlined in our prior presentation in order to keep Riviera green. However, if City Council does... However, if city council does decide to accept development of Riviera, it should require that it's undertaken in a manner to make it the crowning jewel of high-quality housing in Dublin. Allowing Riviera to be developed as another regular, single-family housing development does not adequately compensate for the loss of the last green space in northwest Dublin. Thus, we want to reiterate that any development of Riviera must be undertaken in the highest quality standards possible and maximize the use of conservation design to retain green space and lower the density of the development. The proposed development plan presented last time had come a long way from the initial proposal made by the developer. However, the proposed development plan still falls short of ensuring that Riviera development is the showcase of a Dublin community. There are three significant shortfalls in the proposed development. These are, and the first one was keeping lots forty and forty-one in the development plan, which has been partially addressed in the revision. Two is not encumbering the developer to funding the Highland Croy connector that will be needed in the future. And three, not putting in place a process to ensure that the trees and other natural features of the property are preserved and not destroyed in the development process. Also, at the last city council meeting, another concern was raised. That concerned the need of the quality standards being used. And specifically, it relates to the cost of maintaining green space. You have already addressed some of that. And I think the focus should be, you're asking mainly for the city to pick up two-thirds of the cost. And the information that was talked about by Mr. Reiner on Tartan West is the information that I had, but he's already said it all. We believe the estimate to keep that going for the city is going to be in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand range, city and the homeowners, and with the city picking up most of the cost. So if the city is willing to incur the significant maintenance costs for the benefit of the developer and the future property owners, we then think is appropriate that high development standards be insisted upon. Without holding Riviera development to the highest standard, what's going to preclude other developments that already exist from making the same request for a subsidy? In closing, as city council considers the proposed development plan for Riviera tonight, we again ask if the proposed development plan is really the highest and best use of such land for the entire Dublin community. If city council wants to approve the Riviera development plan, including authorizing significant city expenses for maintaining the green space, we urge that the architectural details that's presented initially not be downgraded. For example, the design standards to modify to allow blacktop drives should be excluded and it should be maintained as concrete drives. In fact, not degrading it, we think it needs to be enhanced. We think it needs to be enhanced by keeping lots forty-one and forty out of it, but not allowing the other lots to be squeezed. We think a hundred and eighty-three lots is sufficient development for that property. Second, we should, you should encumber the developer in some manner to require the developer to fund the cost of the Highland Croy connector. And three, require use of an outside arborist to ensure compliance with the conservation design plans that are in the plan. We appreciate the time city council has given our group to give our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mess. I understand the applicant wants to speak.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey L. Brown. I'm a law partner with the firm of Smith and Hale. I think we have to remember where we started from. We are dealing with a golf facility that is in substantial financial distress. That property is zoned for residential development, large lots, but it does have a residential zoning on it. You have a developer who has worked with the staff and the neighborhoods. You have a development plan that uses a new land planning for Dublin, the conservation design, and the end result of that is a development plan that has fewer units and has more open space. I never thought that having more open space would be such a topic of concern, but obviously that issue has been raised. We started off with standing room only out in the hallway. We had a remote TV at the Planning and Zoning Commission because of all the interest from the neighbors. And through the various meetings that we've had, working with staff, working with the neighborhoods, we are now at a place where staff recommended approval, where the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application, and we don't have standing room only anymore. So I think in terms of, did the process work for the neighborhood, for the city, for the developer? I would say yes in this instance. The plan that we have now is a better plan than we started with. Charlie has said repeatedly, he likes where he's at, that this is a much better layout, better lots, more usable open space, and open space that contributes both to his individual community that he's trying to create, but connects the various communities around us. Our density is below everybody around us. This subdivision has unique design standards. They have fifteen pages as part of our overall text of pictures and words. We have the unique situation in the city that if you start out with a kindergarten student, you can walk he or she to elementary school, middle school, and the high school. That is unique for any community, and we want to take advantage of this. When it comes down to the two issues of the blacktop, as staff has indicated, all we are looking for is the same right that you have in every other subdivision except for one with that option. Doesn't mean that everybody's gonna have blacktop, doesn't mean everybody's gonna have concrete, but what we would like to do and have the ability is that option, which any other house except for that one subdivision has that option under your code. The other thing in terms of the road connection, Charlie has repeatedly said, we don't need the road connection. But staff, in terms of looking at it from an engineering standpoint and a transportation, has says this connection is important for the overall community, not just the subdivision, but how the traffic function on a much broader scale. You heard the neighbors talk about conflicts with people going to the high school and the Avery intersection not being improved yet and everything. So there is this interest to have this connection. What we have done in terms of our development is, one, agreed to give the right of way on all the property, including the fifteen acres that's now part of the zoning. We've agreed to build a stub street so that in the future, if that connection is made, you can tell the neighbors, you know, what do you mean? You saw the street there, you saw the signage, I went with this. We are connecting the dots. And also, in a way, the development is paying for the street connection. The city has suggested doing a TIF that will be funded by the value of the houses. So we, in terms of that development, will be paying for that road connection if and when the city wants to make it. So we think in terms of this situation, this is a good development for the city, it's a good development for the neighborhood, and it's a good development for the property owner, who's in a very difficult situation in terms of the economy and what has happened with the golf courses, not just locally, but in central Ohio. So I think it's a win-win for everybody who has participated in this process. Charlie's here, our land planner architect, Greg Chilag is here, if you have any other specific questions. Thank you.
Very good. Council, any further discussion? Do you want to speak, please?
Just a few items. First of all, in terms of asphalt driveways, every other community around us has asphalt driveways. Sixty-eight percent of the homes in Belvedere and Shannon Glen have asphalt driveways. Sixty-two, thirty-eight percent have concrete. In New Albany, you cannot use concrete. Concrete is banned. I mean, they, they will not let you use concrete as a standard. If you say, we want concrete, we'll do it. I mean, if you make a decision that, that you want concrete, you want, you don't want to give the citizens the right to select whether or not they want asphalt or concrete, you want to make that decision, I'm okay with it and we'll proceed ahead. I can just tell you that most people, when given the option of having either a Sub-Zero refrigerator or a Thermador range, would rather pick that range rather than a concrete drive, I guarantee you. I think, I really do believe that, that the better surface, and I've had concrete drives and I've hated them, I mean, I've replaced them. It's, it's, it's up to you though. I'm not going to stop this zoning because of concrete drives. So if in your wisdom you say, Charlie, you can only have concrete drives, I accept it. I just want you to know that. You make the decision and I'll go along with it. In terms of the homeowners' association, just so you understand, whenever we, whenever a homeowner moves in, there's going to be a five hundred dollar fund paid into the kitty. Whenever, and that homeowner's dues will probably be something like two hundred dollars per quarter. And that comes pretty much to what we see in other surrounding neighborhoods. And I think, John, you, you can bear that out. That's probably what it's going to take to maintain the park areas that we're going to create, especially the sitting parks at the entry. And understand that park at the entry, even though it looks like it's a small little park, that park is, is three hundred feet. The entrance from Avery Road to the end of the park is six hundred feet. That's two football fields. And that's three hundred and fifty feet wide. That's a big, big area. The big park, the one that's going to be maintained, the one that's going to be owned and maintained by the city, is a thirty-acre park. And the closest I can come to defining what that thirty-acre park looks like is Goodale Park. Goodale Park is a little over thirty acres. So that's, that's a sizable piece of land that, that it's going to be at the heart and the substance of this community. I don't know what people mean by showcase of homes or crown jewel of housing or, I mean, this is a piece of land that is set amongst existing housing. This is an infill. This is a piece of property that's been owned by the same owner for the last fifty years. They're citizens and property owners of Dublin. These people have been paying taxes and supporting the community for fifty years. I, I think they need to be treated fairly, just like the communities to the north and south and west of them and east of them. Why, why are they any different? Why, why does it have to be some great standard placed on, on these folks? Because they did such a good job of being good stewards of the land and planting over nine hundred trees on that piece of property over the last fifty years. I don't think you should, I don't think you should penalize them. I, I truly believe that there needs to be a sense of fairness here. In terms of standard of housing, I think, I think you're gonna find that, that we are gonna produce a good, high-quality standard product, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be consistent with the design that's, that's adjacent to it. We're not gonna be, we're not gonna look any different, and I don't think we should look any different. We should be better in terms of the land plan, and I think we've created a land plan that really does make sense. It's the best plan I've ever put together. I am really proud of, of the city forcing me into this plan. I mean, staff did a great job of working with me to develop this conservation plan. And when we finally put it all together, I, I sat back and I looked and I said, this is it, this is really great, this is, this is the best. I am, I'm hoping that this is my swan song, because I'm not going to develop any more property after this one. And I hope I never have to come back and do this again. So please, please do you, do me a favor and get me out of this, this hot seat and let me get on with life as an old man.
Charlie, are you, are you gonna develop all the lots yourself? Are you gonna sell some of them or what's your plan? Should this thing pass tonight?
The land is gonna be developed by me and MI Homes. MI is, is a partner in this deal and they're gonna be developing along with me. My son Charles will probably build on a significant portion of the hundred-foot lots. And I, and I suspect that we'll, we'll have a parade of homes on, on a good portion of those. So we're gonna start out probably with a parade of homes and, and it's probably gonna be in two thousand seventeen, if we're lucky.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this is, if you're the right, I guess you're the right person to ask. Can someone help me understand the numbers here? And, and I'll just give you a peek behind the curtain here. I don't necess, I admire the amount of effort and work that's been put into this project as a whole. From where you started to where you are now, I think everybody would agree, it's, it's miles from where it began and everybody's pleased with the process. And so although the process can be somewhat uncomfortable sometimes, it did result in a much better project, at least as far as what this neighborhood looks like. My problem's with the infrastructure, Greg. And here are my two different questions. The one is the HOA and paying for the HOA paying, you know, in the memo here, it says that for the HOA to maintain its portion of the open space would be about sixty thousand dollars a year, three hundred and twenty-five dollars a house. But now you just mentioned the HOA dues would be two hundred dollars a quarter, which is more like eight hundred dollars a year. So what, what am I missing in my analysis? Because if I add what we've, the latest number we've been given of ninety thousand maintenance by the city, with sixty by the HOA divided, if you divide that, if you put it all on the HOA, it'd be about eight hundred and ten dollars a house. But if the HOA just does the private portion, that's...
I think if, if you're just cutting grass, if you're just sort of keeping things spiffy, it's okay. But that's not what happens with homeowners' associations. When Christmas comes, there's decorations. When there's, when spring comes, there's new plantings. When, when the committees get together, all of a sudden they like more landscaping in a certain place and they want more park benches or they want to, they want to improve some of those park areas. And typically, we've found that throughout every development I've done, you really need to adequately fund them. As soon as you get to a point where you haven't provided for the homeowners to have the source of funds and the operating ability, then, then all of a sudden you're shortchanging that, that community and, and the entrance falls apart. You don't see the, you don't see the trees maintained. If, if you look at Wedgwood, if you look at all of the entrances at Wedgwood, they're spiffy, they're great. There's always new plantings, they're maintained well, they're mulched every, there's, there's just a lot more to it than just cutting grass. And I think what you're, what you're looking at is basic maintenance.
Okay, so you do anticipate more along the lines of the Muirfield, eight-twenty-five, something like that in the annual HOA dues?
I do, I really do, yes.
Okay. And my other issue is with the connector street. And here's my fundamental philosophical question. There's a chart in this infrastructure agreement that shows the percentage and increase of other projects the city is doing that this project will, the increase on other projects that Riviera would bring, right?
Yes.
And your contribution is sort of, in a fair way, sort of equitably adjusted to reflect what you bring to the, what you add?
It's based on the traffic study.
Okay. Why doesn't that same logic apply to the connector street? If most, if, and these are assumptions I'm making in my mind when I think about what's, the people that are gonna use that connector street, I imagine there'll be some regional use, but the overwhelming majority of the use will be from people that come from this development. So why would we not do a traffic study, figure out the percentage, and apply the exact same philosophy to allocating the expense of the road that we're paying to the allocation of the expense of the other projects?
The, the road by this community is not necessary. The connector road is not really necessary, if you're just looking at this community. The addition of, what, what the traffic study says that we would add during the peak evening hour, from five-thirty to six-thirty, if that's the peak hour. hour, from 5:30 to 6:30, if that's the peak hour, we would add twenty-seven cars. We'd add twenty-seven more cars than current to the Forenza Drive location. That's the only major increase. I think it's two additional cars to the Belvedere here, if the road were not built. So in other words, it's hard to justify building a two thousand feet of street for twenty-seven cars in the peak hour. That's one car every two minutes. So what we're looking at here is basically the engineers saying, "Hey, listen, we need to see an additional cross-traffic situation occur from east to west. You can either go to Brand Road or you can go to Corazon Drive to the north and/or some of those other streets of the north, Bitchwood-Dewitt." And what they're looking for is another avenue to filter the traffic that's coming out of Muirfield and places from the east to Highland-Croy to get to the freeway access. And I think that makes common sense. I really do. It does make common sense to say, "Hey, we need to find a way to build a road." But if this subdivision doesn't need that road and doesn't justify this road, why would it have that expense? Now, saying all that, the subdivision's going to pay for that road. It's going to be a TIF. And the TIF comes from the values that created by us building houses on this property. So in essence, the subdivision is ending up paying for the road.
Dana, can you maybe address and verify what we just heard here with respect to the need of that road or the fact that we do not need it?
Right. Well, I think Charlie stated it correctly relative to the engineer's viewpoint. I'll ask Paul Hammer Smith if there's anything he wants to add to that. But basically, I think that we looked at that as an opportunity to make that connector, as Charlie suggested, over from Highland-Croy, so that you have that east-to-west connector. Paul, is there anything you want to add to that? That's fundamentally it. I think that's what the staff resolved. Now, you might then say, "Okay, well, why," back to the point of who should fund it and why. You know, I'd like to be very clear that suggesting a TIF for this is not an incentive for houses. Let me say that again. Suggesting a TIF for this is not an incentive for houses. If you accept for a second that you would build that connector road because you want that for, to distribute traffic, to provide east-west connector, perhaps even increase the possibility for public safety because of police or fire action or, you know, access to that, then you look at that and say, "Okay, well, how might you fund it?" Well, you've got a couple sources. You could take that out of your income tax and pay for that as part of your capital improvement budget. Or you could leverage that. If you accept that there'll be one hundred and eighty-five homes on there, then you could put a TIF on that and let those new homes pay for that. Kind of works out the same as if you impose some fee onto those houses to pay for that road. Either way you shape it, how the new homes would pay for that road under that scenario. Angel and I looked at that and said this would be a good way to pay for that. Now, we said that would be a TIF that would not affect the schools, be a twenty-five percent TIF. It would have some impact on the township fire department initially. I think we resolved that that, at full build-out, that TIF would yield $492,000. And if you accept that on a per capita basis, it costs about $410 per resident to serve, to provide EMS and fire. If you do the math on that, that would cost about $303,000 at build-out. So there is a net profit, if you will, to the township. And I know that their burden for services shifting more to the residential these days than it is supported by the commercial. So that meets their formula in the long run. This will build out over time. It's not going to have to be served overnight. So that was our rationale in doing this, just as a decision point in a way that it could be funded, if you accept that a road connector is appropriate. A course of action may be, "Don't build it." Or a course of action could be, you know, "Build it later and figure out how to fund it later." I would offer that's more difficult once people live there. And I would not encourage you to make that decision down the road, because then you'll have a council chamber filled with people not wanting you to build the road as well. So, but anyway, that's, I hope that helps to answer the question. But that was our rationale at staff level, and whether it was needed, that it was needed, and then how we would suggest funding it if you choose to have it.
Tim?
If I could just add to that, my recollection, having sat up here for a number of years now, in the community plan update, early iterations, and anybody that recalls differently, please speak up. Early iterations for Riviera showed a connector road to Highland-Croy and the property as future residential. Now, that was purely theoretical, of course. And my recollection at the time was that the Riviera leadership did not like that and lobbied city council to amend that theoretical or conceptual view. So I guess I raised this because both staff and at least some of city council, if not all of city council, recognized the potential value in a future connector road to Highland-Croy. So as Dana obviously said better than I can say, you know, this idea of a connector road, you know, is not being proposed to incentivize housing. And the fact of the matter is, is the proposal here is for the housing to actually fund this road that staff and city council to some degree recognized as something that was necessary or needed ten-plus years ago. So that's my recollection of this road. And it seems to me a reasonable proposal under the circumstances that if this gets approved, you know, why not place that financial burden on this development? You know, have these homes, the value created by these homes pay for this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything?
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to say that, as I said at the previous meeting, you know, while if this is approved, you know, I think a proposal like this, this style of housing was maybe a good proposal ten years ago. Mr. Room, I think you have every intention of building a good product here. I'm not disputing that. What my issue is, is that I just don't think we need any more of this style of housing in our community. I think we have enough. I don't think it's sustainable long-term. And, you know, certainly to the extent that folks, that this style of housing appeals to folks, it's available outside of our community, you know, but this is not a style of housing that I favor long-term. Having said that, I also recognize that I believe that you have the option, if this was rejected, to build this, essentially the same number of homes, in any event, because that's the zoning that exists. Am I right? So it's one hundred and eighty-five homes in this design, or it's one hundred and eighty-five homes in an unimaginative design, you know, that doesn't provide for seventy-some acres of open space. And so I guess for me, it's a matter of the lesser of two evils. I'm sorry. I don't mean to offend anyone, but, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Tim. And, you know, I agree with all your points there. I think they're right on. I really believe that this project's come a long way from where it began. I'd say we need to give hats off to Planning and Zoning Commission and staff. And from where we began to where we end up now, it's quite a transformation. Early, I know you want to...
I just had a couple of follow-up questions based on the presentation of the, Mr. Mess, is that his name?
Yes, correct.
My understanding is that tree preservation is required when you're doing this kind of, so that they're going to be putting the fencing up and that the staff would be working and making sure that trees aren't taken down that aren't supposed to be, et cetera. Is that correct?
Correct. At the final development plan stage, which would be based on this plan that is approved tonight, there is a detailed tree preservation plan required and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission that then translates into construction plans approved by zoning as well as by engineering that have detailed location for fencing. And then in this particular development, and there's also requirements for having inspections done prior to those construction permits being issued for fence locations. So our staff would be going out inspecting fences, ensuring that they are in the locations as they were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that they are indeed the fences, like the heavy-duty ones, required for certain areas where that is warranted.
Okay. And I guess that the concern, Charlie, is that something went astray in the other development there off of Brand Road and that trees were taken down that weren't supposed to be? Is that what my understanding is?
There's been a couple of, I'll let the applicant maybe explain a little bit more. I think there is one specific tree that was intended to be preserved that fell due to...
There was one tree that we thought we could save that was intended to come down at the outset. When a subcontractor came in and was putting in the storm sewer, they had to take the tree down. The homeowner who lives adjacent was upset. The subcontractor and the homeowner got into a TIF. Different kind of TIF.
Thanks for the clarification.
And that was resolved. And quite frankly, right now, all of the issues at Wellington have been really resolved very well. There've been an abundance of trees planted. And although they don't look, they don't have that general look of what was there right now, I can tell you that in ten years, it's going to look a lot better than it ever did when we first started. And a lot of the trees that were on that site were dead, were diseased, and weren't really that good. So what's going to end up there is going to be a lot better. And I think if you drive by now that the trees are starting to come out, it's starting to look a lot better. I didn't do that subdivision. My son did develop it. I did get it approved.
Blame the son, right? Yeah.
We threw him right under the bus.
And my other comment has to do with the development standards, that there's some reason, apparently the other neighborhoods believe that this won't be the same quality as their homes are. Do you already have development standards or at what point in the process do those come? And would the staff not require them to be, at minimum, consistent with the locations around them, if not better, just because they're newer and better products are available today than before?
Right. And they are. I mean, compared to especially what the requirements are in the Belvedere, Shannon-Glen area, there really are no development standards. So for those included in this development, we do have an architect on staff that is checking building permitting against all of these standards that are required, as well as the applicant having committed to an architectural review committee. So the requirements in here really are expected to provide for a high-quality residential development.
Very good.
I appreciate Mr. Looklighter's comments. I concur with what he said and I appreciate his speaking about this development. One question I had was with regard to this downstream sewer construction, and this is a picky little thing, but we were talking about constructing a parallel sewer close to OCLC near 270. And I'm wondering if that construction will take place when everything is torn up now? What I don't want to have happen is for things to get buttoned back up from the interchange construction and then we go and, you know, tear things up again to do this sewer construction. So I don't know what the timing is and...
You made Paul get up after all.
Mr. Hammer Smith?
It's good. If you came to the meeting, at least you got to participate.
No, we have no intent of doing that. So it'll come at some point in the future. We are going to program it in the capital improvements program. Honestly, you probably really won't even know it's taking place because it won't be accessed off the 270. It'll be through other properties adjoining the sewer itself.
Paul, do you see two years, five years, ten years?
I would say three to five is my guess. Because it's not needed initially, but it is going to be needed.
Okay. Well, I just, I didn't see what my point.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion then?
No, I just, I want to make some comments on this. I really want to thank Charlie, P&amp;Z, the planning staff, the community groups for really working on the improvement of this project. And really, I got to thank the developer. And Charlie, this is one, I think, one of your better projects as far as the land use portion of it. And I love Wedgwood. I think you did a great job. The housing quality there is fantastic. It's a beautiful project. But that being said, I got to say that I've been weighing this in my conscience, trying to find out what the real benefit of this is to the city of Dublin. And if our task is the health, safety, and welfare of the community, I feel that'd be negligent if we passed this project. And I just want to talk a few minutes on why I feel this way. First of all, we have a school sort of overcrowding issue going on. And maybe this project wouldn't be the one that tips it over, but we have it up from us. We have Jerome Village, which we really can't control in a zoning fashion. It's out of our hands. And I know the traffic coming down from there is going to impact Glick Road and the school system. Number two is, this project is situated on a rural road. And this, there are no plans ever to expand this road and no interest in ever doing so. And there's no money in our CIP in the next five years to ever make this road more adaptable to this kind of development. So I just am concerned about additional traffic for the residents on this two-lane country There's a deviation from the community plan, and I think a few of us may have been here to work on it, maybe not. And this parcel's been designated as a park and open space. And I totally respect Charlie's right to take this R1 and develop it and do something with it. And I know he'd do a quality job with the current zoning. But I do feel with all the community input and all the citizens' input, it's very important to maintain the integrity of this community plan. And it's one of the wonders of our city, and it draws many successful people here, I think, because there's a sense of green space and there's a ratio of green space to resident. We have one of the highest ones in Ohio, the highest, maybe the highest. And it's really a wonderful amenity. We've got to realize we don't have a downtown. We don't have an urban center like Worthington. But we do have really good planning. And there is a sense when people come here about the quality of our life. And it's a subliminal thing that really has brought in a lot of business and a lot of people into our community. So I think it's very important that we really defend that. The next thing that sort of shocked me was the infrastructure expenses to the taxpayer. And I was just, as we went through all this at the last meeting in great detail, the Highland-Croy connector, if we had to purchase part of it, and Charlie kindly volunteered his portion of it, the sewer service, the maintenance of the lawns, the, on and on and on. It was sort of mind-boggling, the expense of subsidizing a residential community. I can't recall ever in my history of thirty-five years where we've ever gone to this level to subsidize a residential community that normally the applicant paid for most of these improvements. So that was another issue. The other, the other thing that I worry about is the total lack of quality control. The development standards, as I mentioned last time, was about as holy as a Swiss cheese sandwich at Katzinger's, and I really mean that. I mean, there just wasn't any foundation to really control the quality of these projects. And I figure, I feel... And I figure, I feel that this would be a disservice to the neighbors to not least bring these to some kind of standard that was, have some merit. And when I say that, and I want to thank you, Mr. Brown, for mentioning you'd widen the sidewalks to a normal width, and that was a good concession. But what I'm interested in is the fact that there's no real control over issues like, and, you know, the developer that was mentioned, like, for instance, porches that are really porches, and they're not just two feet with a pillar on them, and you could actually sit on them. And things like this are really important, I think, to the quality of a project. And there's a lot of builders building this kind of thing out there. And I just spent two years reviewing a builder in my capacity as an architectural review officer, and the city really doesn't have this capacity within it to do this. We do not have that program in our city. But at Muirfield, we do. And I know this developer submitted 13 houses, and only five of them were accepted, and we had to review them for two years to even bring them up to some standard of quality that we felt was acceptable to the neighborhood. And so in this architectural review program that the developer has submitted, there's a committee, but there's really no outside members on the committee or city members, or it's really pretty much controlled by the developer. And I really think that that's a real bad situation to be in. The architectural styles were a bunch of photographs. I checked the other two projects that were just developed by this developer and her family, and I didn't see any of these pilasters or any of these architectural amenities that were sort of put as pictures in this. Foursided architecture, I think, is very important. The city's finally decided that the houses here weren't going to be theater facades with just a facade on them, and then three sides of whatever was fairly inexpensive wrapping around the house. And again, as I said last time, I went out and measured the level of improvements on the houses in the last subdivision that were put up. And, you know, the level of excitement on, you might say, or architectural interest on these houses was a 22-inch-high, what we call a look-and-stick brick, mock brick attachment wrapping around the house. So, you know, I am concerned about the quality of the house, how it faces the neighbors, and what they're really going to view. There was never any mention about the garages, how many of them are three-sided, how many of these houses would be brick or masonry, what exactly was going to really occur in this subdivision. All these things were pretty left undone in the architectural standards. Something that I think is really very unattractive is the fact that a lot of developers will develop a house, you'll have a porch that's two or three feet out the back, and the most development that occurs is a wooden stairs that sometimes lasts for 20 years. People just come out their back porch and walk down into the lawn. There's no patio. It's never developed. Looks very unattractive. And so, again, these kind of things, I think, are very important to the overall aesthetic of a house. If you drive around the back of it, you're going to have to see it if it's part of a community. And again, we really don't have any standards to regulate that. And so, there's, you might say, a whole series of these kinds of things, you know. Are the electric boxes going to be screened? You know, are they going to be sitting out there forever? You know, is there any commitment on the part of the developer to do any of these things? So, you know, the bottom line of this, I could not see any way where this would be as positive benefit to the citizens of Dublin, financially or otherwise. I think it's, you know, it's a, I think, and I respect this developer a great deal, by the way, but, you know, I see him as the primary beneficiary of this particular effort and the Italian-American country club. So I think I'd like to see him develop this in an R1. I think, you know, if there were some issues like on the land maintenance, if it could have been turned over to Metro Parks to maintain, or something like that, or just any kind of effort to upgrade the project in a more comprehensive way, I think would have been very important for the community. So, you know, I will have trouble supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Help me out here with the order. Were we...
I think we may have a request.
Thank you. I thought we did.
Mayor Jeff Brown again. We feel it's very important that we understand the blueprint to this project before we do the zoning. So we would request that you vote on the infrastructure agreement first and then vote on the zoning.
Okay. Very good. Counsel, okay with that? All right, then.
Excuse me, if I may. Claudia, could you speak to Mr. Reiner's comments regarding architectural standards?
Well, I did not...
I know that, excuse me, I'm sorry, the developer proposed a three-person review committee, and Mr. Reiner questioned the composition. I don't want to put words in your mouth before, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
Which is a typical arrangement of all of the subdivisions we have. I'm going to say Tarkenridge might be the only one that is slightly different. I know Ballantry is set up like that. While I reserve, most of the other ones are set up just like that. Oak Park, Celtic Crossing. So it's not an unusual thing to see that makeup of an architectural review committee.
Okay, but could you speak, you know, on a larger scale to the concerns regarding architecture, you know, whether it's going to be four-sided, and, you know, many of the things that he mentioned, you know, what controls exist, how are we going to ensure that, you know, it's the high-quality project that we'd like to see? I think maybe Council Member Genesi Zerker made comments to this effect as well.
Yeah, I mean, the controls that exist are the ones that are within the development text, as well as the ones in the zoning code and the appearance code standards. So the screening of the utilities, for example, is a code requirement. In terms of the outdoor amenity areas, we do not currently have a requirement that I know of, either in the zoning code nor in really any of the development texts, in terms of personal preferences to as to what people want in their outdoor areas.
Claudia, to be clear, what's the value range of these houses? Do we have an idea?
The sub-area A will probably be somewhere in the vicinity of $750 to $1 million.
I guess I would just submit that anybody putting a house up that size is going to have a deck or a screen porch, and they're not going to have steps coming off the back of the house down to your yard at that price range and that level. So that's just my view.
You know, Mayor, you never know how much profit's in the job and what they're really going to do. I mean...
Thank you.
In terms of the makeup of the architectural review committee, we're going to have a registered architect, we have a registered landscaper, and then a representative of the developer. Those people aren't working for me. They're going to get paid to do their job. We're going to charge the builder $200 a house for architectural approval. And that's exactly what we did at Wedgewood. That's the same makeup, and probably the same people will be involved as were in Wedgewood. We're concerned about colors. In the planning commission, we committed to not every house being all siding, a certain percentage of the facade being not all stucco, being brick or stone. I think we've addressed a great number of the items that you talked about. And you're right, it isn't the end-all or the cure-all. And you can find a hole in almost anything you provide. But we started out with probably a page and a half of architectural standards, much similar to Celtic Estates and much, very similar to Wellington and very similar to Oak Park. But we ended up with 15 pages of descriptive architectural elements, what we're doing with shutters, what we're doing with roof pitches. I mean, we really made an effort here to do the right thing. And I think it sets the pace for where we're going with this.
Thank you, Mr. Rumman. Jennifer, let me ask you with respect to the motion to approve the preliminary plat, is there any order that that has to come in?
It has to come after the rezoning.
So we want to do 36, 35, and then the preliminary plat. And can you call the vote on ordinance 36-15, please?
Which one is that?
36-15 is the infrastructure.
Infrastructure agreement.
Got it.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
No.
And Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Thank you. And then on 35-15?
Excuse me, I would, I just want to make sure I understand what conditions are here. If there's the condition, I guess I would like for there to be the condition that there be no asphalt.
That's on 35-15.
Yes, the 13 conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission include the no asphalt conditions. We would need to have the applicant revise their development text after this meeting.
So to be clear, to Tim's point, okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So we're on to 35-15?
Mr. Reiner?
No.
And Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Very good. I need a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And that takes us to ordinance 37-15.
Adopting a proposed tax budget for fiscal year 2016.
Ah, Ms. Mumma.
Good evening, members of council. We are requesting approval of ordinance 37-15 this evening, which is the tax budget for the year 2016.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. I'm going to grab...
Yes.
My apologies.
It's okay.
Welcome back. Okay, carry on, please.
Okay, we are requesting approval of ordinance 37-15 this evening, which is our tax budget for 2016. As outlined in your staff memo, we are required to file this by July 15th, I'm sorry, July 15th of each year to both Delaware and Franklin Counties in order for the city to receive its general local government funds. At this time, we are not revising our income tax projections for the year, so therefore, we will stay consistent with what we were planning for 2015, as well as have no change for 2016. And that's just based on what we know with the environment with Nationwide and Verizon. As such, we have just programmed a 1% increase in expenditures. Obviously, both of these components, the revenue and expenditure side, will be taken into consideration as we go on through the year and as we present to council and prepare for council's review of the 2016 operating budget.
Very good. Counsel questions? Anything? Okay, this is our normal annual updates here, the process that we follow. With that, Ann?
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson, Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 38-15.
Authorizing the city manager to end to end to an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for maintenance of a bridge on State Route 745 over Indian Run, except easements associated with the maintenance and release of unnecessary easements and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Ms. Callahan? Can you bring in your presentation up there?
Just have one visual. Good evening, council members. The location of the bridge that is the subject of the ordinance is up on the screen. North is to your right. You see North High Street, which is State Route 745. You see Veterans Park. So the bridge is near Veterans Park right there. So since this is a state route, ODOT currently holds easements relating to the original construction and the maintenance of the existing bridge at this location. As a part of the city's purchase of land in 2013 located at 94 and 100 North High Street, city committed to work in good faith with ODOT to obtain release of slope easements. The slope easements span two parcels on the east side of North High Street. You can see them labeled up on the screen. They were intended to provide ODOT with access to maintain the slope there. This slope will no longer exist into the future due to the redevelopment of the adjacent property, as the proposed buildings will be constructed to meet the street level there. So the slope easements will no longer be necessary. Staff worked with ODOT over the past year, and ODOT has agreed to transfer the easements in exchange for the city to maintain the bridge. Accepting maintenance responsibility not only provides for this, but it also will give the city greater flexibility to modify the bridge in the future should we decide to explore providing a connection between the parklands on both sides of the street. Bridge is currently rated as being in satisfactory condition based on the last inspection. And with that, staff recommends council dispense with public hearing and adopt ordinance number 38-15 by emergency.
Thank you, Megan. Any council questions, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat as an emergency.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh? I'm sorry, Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes. Very good. Ordinance 39-15. Thank you, Megan.
Authorizing execution of an infrastructure agreement to provide for the construction of public infrastructure improvements related to a residential development.
I'll introduce it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and comment on this. This is a continuation or in fulfillment of the development agreement you previously approved relative to the taller flats agreement. Terry is here if there are any other questions that you might have.
Any council questions? No public testimony. There'll be a second reading, public hearing on June 22nd. Thank you. Ordinance 40-15.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate exchange agreement and the necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 1.20 acres, more or less fee symbol interest from the Central Ohio Trans Authority located adjacent to and north of Dale Drive in exchange for 0.815 acres, more or less, to be owned by the city located adjacent to and west of Dale Drive and north of State Route 161 for the replacement of a Cota park and ride and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Rick. Mr. Bogler, you going to take this?
Yes.
Thank you.
As councilors aware, we've been negotiations with Cota for the relocation of their park and ride on Dale Drive. Specifically, their current location is aligned with one of the major east-west routes proposed in the Bridge Street District. If you remember, the major circulator that John Shields Parkway forms, the northern arm of Bridge Park Avenue constitutes the southern arm. Last year, council authorized, the city acquired piece of property from Wendy's, which will be one leg of that roadway along the southern end of that circulator, and also from Dale Holdings, the city, the condemnation action about a year and a half ago, when it purchased a piece of property for the Dale-Taller Connector to also provide for the extension of that roadway. We've been in negotiations with Cota for some time and believe that we've reached agreement with regard to the relocation of that facility. Before you tonight is an ordinance that authorizes the execution of the agreements to do that. In effect, the current Cota site located on Dale Drive would be transferred to the city at no cost. We expect that to occur before the end of this month. As an interim move, the city would make available to Cota real estate available on the current buyer site that the city owns, the former buyer site, as a temporary park and ride while we construct a new facility. The slide before you right now is the current Cota site. Make sure we can get that. Which is about eight tenths of an acre, and currently has about 84 spaces on it. The city's proposing that to develop a new facility at a cost probably around $800,000 to replace those 84 facilities on a site also on the Dale Holdings parcel that's located about 300 feet from the site. This depicts the Dale Holdings parcel. If you look at the upper left-hand corner of that site, that would be the edge of the existing Cota site, so they are very close. This is at the bend of Dale Drive. To the left of the proposed site, you will see the you will see, I think, a current daycare facility, just south of the site is an auto dealership. So the site is very much consistent with the area served by the existing location, it's out of the way of any planned infrastructure, and actually, it would be a trade of about one point two plus acres from Cota for point eight plus acres for this site, and we can accommodate the same amount. So the authorizations before you would authorize the real estate exchange, the development of the new site on the new parcel, as well as provide a license agreement that would accommodate the interim use of the buyer's site for approximately a twelve-month period. Any questions on the agreements, we'd be happy to answer them.
Council, questions?
The only question I have is probably less about disagreement per se, but more on why does Cota believe they need to own property to, it seems to me that by agreeing to this type of thing, that we are supporting their proposition, their policy of owning property, and with the, you know, change in transportation options that should be occurring in central Ohio, and the dialogue that should be going on, and I believe is going on, this may not be what is the future of the multi-transportation methods that would be accessible to our residents.
I think administratively, we certainly concur with you that that would be the preference, and we've explored options, including using planned parking structures in the area, we've proposed ten-year leases on the subject property and other means to get us there, those have not proved acceptable negotiations on this, there is some precedent with Cota having leased properties from churches and others, but I think where they own an existing facility, in effect, they needed another replacement facility to own from their perspective on that, despite, I think, extensive discussions and negotiations, they have expressed a willingness to the city manager to, as those opportunities emerge in the future, to work with us on those, but in the near term, they insisted on an ownership situation, Dana's had more discussions with the director there if he has anything to add.
Merely, I couldn't agree with you more, and there was a lot of different options that were offered, including space in the parking garage, which would facilitate the development, when you think about ridership and such, that would be a perfect place for it, changing demographics would also dictate, why would you, why would you want to own a site when you may need to move around? I'm hopeful that this council at some point can do some options that would allow us to move people around and maybe small, what was the terminology we used for that Dana?
Circulator.
Circulators, that we would look into that, and I know it's on our radar, and I think this council will be working to that end, so. I appreciate, really, staff, Dana, you in particular, your hard work on this, it was a very troublesome effort, and thank you for all your efforts, and staff as well. Anybody else?
I just wanted to clarify, how many, they have eighty-four spaces now?
Eighty-four on the current, and I think the new one proposes eighty-five spaces.
So they're gaining one space?
In the current level of planning, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is just further evidence of, you know, I guess, sort of the antithesis of how we plan and forecast, looking to the future in Dublin versus how they're choosing to do business, so, just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Thank you.
One more clarification for council, just for the public information, the planning commission is slated to hear the conditional use permit applications for both the interim and permanent site at its June eleventh meeting.
Very good, thanks for that clarification, there'll be a second reading and public hearing on June twenty-second, thank you.
Thank you.
Introduction, I'm sorry, resolution fifty-one dash fifteen.
Authorizing the city manager to temporarily provide maintenance at the village at Kaufman Park for a period of one year.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Megan, busy night for you.
Good evening, council members again, we received a request last fall from the Village of Kaufman Park Condominium Association for partial relief from maintenance responsibilities of public areas within their neighborhood. This particular development was approved for up to sixty-six homes, and currently there are eleven homes constructed. The determination of the amount of public land maintenance responsibilities was based on the full buildout of the sixty-six homes, so the level of maintenance responsibility per home currently is far more than was planned at buildout. Staff reviewed the request and determined that as a result of this unique situation, the level of association responsibility for maintenance of public areas is excessive in comparison to others around the city. Staff recommended the city temporarily assume maintenance responsibility for the public common area mowing and turf. Public Services Committee met on May twenty-sixth to discuss the broader topic of HOA maintenance of public common areas citywide, as a part of that committee meeting, we discussed this request specifically, and the committee concurred with staff's finding and findings, and recommends the city temporarily provide the maintenance relief requested for a period of one year, at which time we can reevaluate the situation. Staff recommends approval of resolution fifty-one fifteen.
Thank you, Amy, you chaired the Public Services Committee, do you have the report?
I did, we had a lengthy discussion, and as Ms. Callahan has alluded to, we did discuss this particular site pretty extensively, they have a very different situation than many HOAs find themselves in, and I guess this begs a larger question to, and maybe legal can do some research, but I'm curious how, with regard to, you know, we just heard a developer saying, well, when they're seventy-five percent built out, we aren't close to that at this point, I mean, I know that they, they acquired from a different builder, I think, and so there's a history there.
Correct.
But in any case, the bottom line here is that these eleven homeowners are spending a great deal of money maintaining a city-owned park area that is adjacent to their neighborhood, and we are sort of wrestling with some larger issues, but in the interim, we would ask that the city continue, or the city assume maintenance of the pond area, the mowing, and then the care of the pond for a period of one year.
Could I just make a clarification?
Absolutely.
We discussed the Public Services Committee, and I proposed, and maybe this is splitting hairs, but as I read the staff report and the agreement, it set effective one year from, or I'm sorry, for one year, you know, from the effective date.
From the effective date of this resolution.
And I think I had proposed it under the circumstances we do it through 2016, I mean, technically, right, I mean, if it's one year, if we pass it tonight, then, you know, we start maintaining, you know, this open space June of next year, right? And we have to consider it again, I just thought, you know, for everyone concerned, including ourselves, you know, that we just say that this agreement is good through 2016.
So was the original idea to review this year to year, as we saw how the buildout occurred?
That is certainly one option, the Public Services Committee, we're sort of working with staff to do some more, get some more hard data based on our discussion a couple weeks ago, so hopefully, we would come forward, council would agree on a larger solution for the whole city, but in the interim, for the sake of getting this particular neighborhood situated, if we could maintain through 2016.
Yeah, that was a question I was gonna ask, maybe it sounded like when I read through this, that on an interim basis, we're trying to provide, if you will, some relief.
Right.
For this particular area, and that's up, you would, your committee would then, in the next year, work to attain a more permanent solution.
Right, hopefully, much sooner than one year, yes.
So, really, we, anybody else want to comment on that? Somebody want to make a motion to amend?
If Tim is making the motion, I'll certainly second it.
Okay, great, consider, consider the motion.
Consider it done, you got it, Ann?
So through 2016.
Through 2016, everything else remains the same, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Thank you, Ann.
And Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
And Luckleyter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zarker?
Yes.
I think that's a good suggestion, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Tim, clarifying that.
We have public art selection, we have a staff report from Mr. Getman, Kurt, I don't want to shortchange you here, but we've read through most of this material, so give us a, give us your overview, and understand, understand that we've looked at this.
Okay.
Okay? I know you all work hard on these presentations, and, hi, David.
Now, this is something that we're spending a lot of money on.
Okay, good evening, members of council, Kurt Getman, the contract specialist of public art for the city of Dublin, and I will present our site selection recommendation for the next Dublin Art and Public Places Commission this evening, as part of a short presentation. So, city staff and Dublin Arts Council staff began the process of selecting a site in November, and toured each location in April. By creating a collection of public art, the Dublin Art and Public Places program goal is to enhance the quality of life for Dublin residents and to strengthen the city as a destination for visitors. The collection includes both large and small visual artworks acquired through a variety of models in which Dublin Arts Council is actively engaged, including major gifting, committed-directed, committee-directed projects, calls for entries and jurying, online programs with an acquisition component, interactive projects, contributions to the city's interior collection, and projects which define a community initiative. The Dublin Art and Public Places Program was begun in nineteen eighty-eight and now includes nineteen stops on an acclaimed cellphone tour, thirteen River Boxes, hybrids of geocaching and letterboxing, with over a hundred and seventy sculptural elements as part of the award-winning collection. Dublin Arts Council maintains that public art should inspire an emotional response, provoke questions, and invite interaction, while encouraging ingenuity and creative discovery by artists. The collection of public artworks distinguishes our community and creates a sense of place while contributing to Dublin's aesthetic legacy. Dublin's award-winning public art collection is internationally recognized in part because of the attention paid to creation of meaningful, educational, site-specific artworks. The collection contributes significantly to Dublin's sense of place and is enhanced by a unique cellphone tour and an interactive gaming app called Where I Go. The collection is included in two very prestigious databases and apps, the Culture Now Museum Without Walls project, and the Public Art Archive. The collection is called A Cultural Gem and One of America's Finest Small Collections by Abby Suckle, president of Culture Now, it enlightens viewers to topics of local history, ecology, leisure pursuits, and more. The collection's large-scale site-specific artwork is physically accessible and can be viewed from three hundred and sixty degrees. The opportunity for exploration and engagement is critical, as we consider the next addition to the collection. As you see here, a number of important criteria were considered in site visits by a committee of city of Dublin and Dublin Arts Council staff. So now I'll turn the presentation over to Kurt to explain the attributes of the sites that have been considered, Kurt?
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David. The Site Selection Committee really did take a look at these, as we were thinking about the potential sites for the next project. The sites that we felt the most strongly about, after looking at a lot of different considerations, are the Hold-A-Right Farm and Earthworks, the South Fork Indian Run Greenway, which is, which is obviously a large amount of possibilities there, Emerald Fields Park, and Werner Temple Greenway. This is, show you where they are in relation to each other. The first site that we wanted to talk quickly about was the Hold-A-Right Farm and Earthworks, which as you know, has a great amount of historic significance, going back over two thousand years, that we can record at least. There's a lot of activity going on within the next eighteen months here at the site, there's going to be a parking lot, a pedestrian bridge, a visitor orientation center, restrooms, the house, the farmhouse itself was completed last year, as you know, so this is, this is actually ready for people. The visibility from the new Emerald, Emerald Eight is high, the educational opportunities are really off the chart with this, and the historical significance of the site is very high. This shows you from the Hold-A-Right master plan, some of the other potential things that are being considered down the road, interpretive paths, a reconstruction of what one of the mounds might have looked like in the past, because the current ones are obviously a little hard to see. But these are some of the things that we felt strongly about this, and this is really a site that could really be activated by art, you know, right now, that it's a site with great potential, but art could really trigger interest in this. Next up is the South Fork Indian Run Greenway, which obviously is a, has a large land area that runs along the multi-use path and the South Fork Indian Run Creek. It connects Kaufman Park with Indian Run Meadows Park, Red Trade Bu, Arboretum, a lot of ponds, and beautiful spaces in between, this goes through a lot of the backs of residential areas, and we reached out to, for all, with all of these, we've reached out to the HOAs and potentially affected residents. We did have one resident who thought it would be a good idea to, that a great specific site within here would be the Post Preserve area, some of the public area there, at Post and perimeter, but with this, with this range of sites, we could either do, you know, there's a lot of specific sites that are great, or we could maybe do some kind of art that's sequential, that occurs throughout the path and runs the entire distance. Emerald Fields Park, when this, when this area was constructed, it was, we put a three thousand square foot circle within these baseball diamonds that would be a future home for something like public art, or a large, you know, visual thing, or an ice cream stand, or something, it's just, this is shovel-ready for us to put something in the middle here. And the last but not least is the Werner Temple Greenway, this is a, you know, heavily trafficked thoroughfare, and with here, there's, there's a potential to maybe connect two of our larger, more well-known pieces, you have the Dancing Hares over at Ballantre, and you have the Fields of Corn, you know, over on Franz, and, you know, with the, with the, with this being a heavily biked and walked area, and a nice, you could create a nice drivable connector between the other artworks.
Okay, so as you can see, all the potential sites are very strong and have many compelling attributes, however, the committee found one particular site especially compelling, and would like to make a specific recommendation for your consideration and acceptance this evening. So the Site Selection Committee recommends the Hold-A-Right Farm and Earthworks as the site for the next Dublin Art and Public Places project, and considers the Bridge Park development as the next potential location to be considered after Hold-A-Right. The Hold-A-Right site will be highly visible from the newly completed Emerald Parkway, has great historical significance, as Kurt had mentioned, and potential for education, and will contribute positively to Dublin's sense of place. As part of our site selection process, committee members notified homeowners' association leadership in neighborhoods adjacent to each potential site, members of the committee met in person with neighbors adjacent to the location, and received positive feedback about the potential for public artwork at the site. We are confident that the neighbors will continue to support the project as they are engaged along the way. The next steps would be to consist of convening a jury to evaluate initial and finalist artist's applications and their proposals, ultimately making a recommendation to council of the artist to the commission to create the artwork. Committee feels that it's important, if the Hold-A-Right site is confirmed this evening, to include experts in the field of archaeology and/or the study of indigenous peoples, community members, and artists on the jury. A call for artists for this one hundred and fifty thousand all-inclusive commission will be distributed nationally, with a special emphasis on Ohio artists and indigenous peoples. The project timeline has been drafted to coincide with park creation at the site, we anticipate that the call will be distributed in the third quarter of 2015, selection of three finalists will take place toward the end of 2015. Three finalists will visit the site in the spring of 2016, at that time, a contractor will have been selected, and final plans approved for the park construction, allowing the artist to have clear vision as to available sites for public artwork. Following site visits, the finalists will create proposals, which will be presented to the community and a jury in the summer of 2016, after which the jury will make a recommendation to council regarding the commission. Are there any questions, comments?
I have a couple comments, I actually can't support your recommendation, I think that we have invested, we are investing a lot of money in already doing great things at this site, and we don't need another public art piece to add to it because of everything that is going on. One thing that I feel that public art should be placed in a place that isn't already engaging the public for other purposes, I know that that might be contrary to what your belief is, because you... I know that that might be contrary to what your belief is, because you've got a lot of people coming, so they're going to see more public art. But I think that it draws more attention. You look at like Warner Temple and that area there, there's enormous numbers of people that ride their bikes, they walk, they, obviously, the cars are there. As you indicated, it would bring together sort of the Dancing Hares and the corn, the Field of Corn, and I think it'd be much more visible to a lot more people than, and the Holder property, you know, depending on the location of it, you'd have to be going there to necessarily see it, as opposed to the Warner Temple site, you know, where you're just driving by and you see it like you do the Field of Corn, you didn't know it was there, it just appears in front of you. And then I had a question as to why the Post Preserve and Park Place was not presented as a viable option. What went into that since that has great visibility, and certainly that's the area of town that we're building substantially with Ohio University and others.
Looks like David passed the baton there.
The, I do think that the Post Preserve site that was brought to our attention by the HOA board member was, is viable, and it fits, you know, within the broad range of possibilities over at the South Fork Indian Run Greenway. It was brought to our attention relatively late after we had looked at a lot of other different places, but, you know, it's definitely a viable option.
So it wasn't something that our staff or, I'm not sure, Kurt, are you on our staff or are you a contract person?
Oh, I'm on staff.
Okay. We haven't met you before, so, welcome. So the Park, Post Preserve, do we have a list of twenty potential sites, or are you grading them every time it's time to do a public art piece?
We whittled it down to the four that we felt best met the criteria that we had set some months back. You know, there was a handful of other ones in consideration, but these ones were the ones that we felt most satisfied the selection criteria.
Thank you.
Who else? Anybody else?
I'm curious, you spoke about the Holder Wright being your first choice, and then you said something about with the next one being Bridge Park? And so I'm curious what happens to these three after that, or I guess we're like going from, you know, we need to approve this one, and then we're already thinking that the next one is coming up with Bridge Park when we've got these three other sites plus a fifth one?
I think what we mean by this, and I may turn to David here to see if he agrees, but that one of these four here would be the next project, and that the one after that would be Bridge Street. And then that the three unselected sites could remain in consideration for, you know, these are all strong sites, and I don't think that if something didn't happen for four years that it would, that they'd become any less viable than they are today.
The character that it's at, the Miracle League, the baseball player that's metal, is that a public art piece, or how did that get acquired?
That wasn't acquired through the Art in Public Places program. That was a city commission, my understanding.
That's Going Going Gone, I think, isn't it?
No, 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 no. Going Going Gone is not that.
It was a donation.
It was a donation?
In honor of the Miracle League athletes.
That's what I was thinking, that might be what it was, because I was thinking like in this Emerald Fields Park, that the DYA or who uses this park a lot, is it through the DYA primarily, or how, Fred, how is this programmed?
Yeah, the Ball Diamond area is DYA, then the northern area is La Crosse and, gosh, I get it mixed up, whether it's La Crosse in the spring and Cricket in the fall, or vice versa.
And those are done by a DYA-type organization?
Yeah, the Cricket is not, but the La Crosse is.
So I'm wondering if that might not be, I know you're on your way out, but maybe you could pass this on to the next person, that to work with those organizations to participate financially in having something put in that park?
We could. Typically, it's vice versa, they work with you to get you to make donations to them, but we can.
Bed test.
Well, we are, the layout did the setup.
Yes. You know, let me just applaud the process, because we've been down the road here over several years, many years, and at least we know we have four viable places that we're not going to have anarchy, if you will. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, I guess I would echo Merrill Lee's comments, I guess. I think certainly I'll be supportive, whatever council decides, but I'm thinking about the Holder Wright Farm and Earthworks, and that to me is sort of the art in and of itself. We've got the burial grounds there, and, well, actually, I don't think they're burial grounds, they're some kind of ceremonial grounds, but in any case, I think they sort of are, and I'd like to see that property develop and see how we use it, and see, you know, as you said, it's an educational component is there, and I'd like to wait a little bit until we start fully using that park and see how it is used, and see, you know, what sites there, you know, what sites on the grounds might lend themselves to public art and sort of how it develops out.
Yeah, good points. Tim?
Fair enough, fair enough, Amy.
Yeah, I think.
Before we move past Holder Wright is that I think art could provide a really strong visual focal point for the entire park. I don't know that there is one, there's a lot of interesting things in the park, but there's not necessarily one visual focal point.
Tim?
I think interesting observations, and Merrill Lee, you raised one that I'm a little surprised I'm hearing of for the first time this evening, and that is Post Preserve and Park Place. You know, certainly high visibility, but a little surprised I haven't heard of it before, you know, as a suggested location for public art.
It came up late in the game, didn't it? Is that what I understood?
It was brought to my attention about eight o'clock this morning, so.
Oh.
That would explain why you haven't. Yeah, but I mean, it's not on our staff's list.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It just wasn't on our staff's list.
Somebody brought it forward, I just.
Yeah, just this morning.
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I understand.
Anybody else? I guess for me personally, I like the fact that when you drive by the Field of Corn or some other ones that are more visible, that it gets a lot of, we get a lot of traffic, we get a lot of looks, kind of like, you know, freeway exposure for buildings out here, that they always rate that by the number of cars that go by or what have you, but I think it generates that kind of discussion. And you know I've been involved in that for a long, long time, so that's my personal preference, and I agree with some of the comments about there's so many other things going on at Holder. I would just make a recommendation, maybe that you take these comments tonight and maybe come back to us with some other thoughts or some other recommendations, because it doesn't sound to me, council, is anybody totally on board with Holder?
No.
So.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with that. Maybe they should go back and check out the, I like the Warner Temple area very well. I think we need some things in that area. Also, if there's a latecomer, maybe you ought to look at that, because it's, I would think recommendations for locations would come from not only staff but also from our residents. So I like Mike's idea, the mayor's idea, that we look at these and come back to us.
Okay. We thank you for the presentation.
You know, Mike, there's someone who signed in to testify.
I'm sorry, you're right. We do have public testimony, and that's Marion Vordermark, would you like to come forward? My apologies, that was the next item on the list here, so.
My name is Marion Vordermark. I'm at 6834 Stillhouse Lane, Dublin. I'm a homeowner in Post Preserve. I'm a trustee, and.
Well, you probably liked the comments here then tonight.
Yeah, I'm the person that had contacted David, and then this morning I spoke with Kurt, and, you know, last week was the tournament, so everybody was busy, right? Everybody was working and volunteering and, you know, and I knew that it was not a time to catch everybody on Friday afternoon and make contact, send out emails and photos. So anyway, I figured if I came here today, and I did send some images, oh, did you receive images, David? Okay, good. Over there, and I had sent some to Merrill Lee, but, so anyway, I said to myself, well, since parks and open spaces, and I did get that letter on June 1st, so, it was dated June 1st, and the Dublin Arts Council is considering a work of art in the area of Post Preserve, I would like to, council and all the parties, to consider the corner of Post Road and Perimeter Drive. Can you picture that? Post Road dead ends into Perimeter Drive. And that's after you go by the Convallarium.
Uh huh.
Okay. That is owned by the city, and it sits in front of a beautiful park-like setting, which is the Post Preserve Reserve. So that's owned by the city, so that property would always be controlled by and maintained by our HOA, so that would always be kind of like, the city doesn't maintain it, we do, but it would always be a beautiful setting. And so you might remember that council approved, not you, but approved a beautify your neighborhood grant there to enhance this area to welcome President's Cup visitors back in 2013. This is a high-traffic area between OU Heritage School of Medicine and Dublin Hospital and Nestle Research and future developments that come in, plus it's the northern entrance to our city. So I think this prominent location would showcase Dublin's dedication to the arts in addition to technology, industry, and retail. I think it would be a sense of place. I think it would be a welcome to Dublin with mature trees, ponds, and traditional stacked stone walls, a beautiful environment to place a work of art.
Very good, we appreciate your comments and input, and as you just heard, they're going to take it back under advisement and report back to us at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
If people would like the images, I could send them over.
We can get those, they'll put them in our packet. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have direction? Very good. With that, we have the acceptance of the Report of Tax Incentive Review, council. Ms. Muma, you one more time.
Yes, I have no presentation for you this evening, other than to reiterate with what Councilwoman Tennessee Zirker mentioned last council meeting that we, the Turk Committee did meet on May 5th. The report that was provided in advance of that meeting, as well as follow-up information, was provided to you in your packet for this evening.
Merrill Lee's the chair of that committee, so do you have anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We would respectfully request a motion to approve those minutes and the report.
So move.
I'll second.
To accept minutes from Report of Tax Incentive Review, and there's a second. Anne?
Ms. Tennessee Zirker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleyter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes, thank you. Dana, staff comments?
Yeah, I do have a few tonight. First of all, there was, in items of interest, there was a memo initiated by Colleen Gilger regarding the 2015 Midwest U.S.-Japan Association Conference, which will be held in Tokyo this summer, in September 13th through the 15th. She points out in her memo what that association is. We've learned more about this association over the last year. In fact, Jeremiah Gracia attended a conference with them that was held in the States. They alternate between the States and Japan every other year. So was in Iowa this last year, will be in Tokyo this year. We would anticipate Jeremiah is going to be going to this one, along with some central Ohio folks, including staff from Columbus 2020, Jobs Ohio, Union County, City of Marysville, and other economic development practitioners, and also typically, Marysville and Union County has sent elected officials on this trip as well to this conference, and there are some engagements there at the conference, but then there are also some outreach efforts that are made with Japanese businesses to attempt to arrange additional business meetings. And again, similar to the other engagements that we do there, try to do that. There's not as much of that as you would normally do when we go for that purpose. This is more about the conference, and a lot of times the businesses come to the conference, therefore you can make that engagement while you're there. So just, we need some direction on if any of you want to attend that.
It's a short time fuse there on that.
There is, in terms of getting arrangements made, we would like to get that done sooner rather than later.
Counsel, anybody you want to do that?
I'd be interested.
We could send more than one, I presume.
No, somebody else wants to go.
Whatever your.
I mean, does anybody else want to accompany? I don't know why we wouldn't send two if we could do that. Just Merrill Lee?
My daughter's getting married that weekend, I maybe would want to get out of town that following Monday, but.
That's one way to get out of the bill. Go the other side of the world.
Amy, I wish you were there.
Hearing nobody else, then it looks like Merrill Lee will sign up for that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, you put her on board, and I'm sure you'll work it out with her. What else?
Thank you, thanks for doing that. Also want to just congratulate the mayor for being appointed to the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advisory Board. That was the governor's appointment, and they will work on creating standards for hiring, recruiting, and local community interaction regarding police matters and use of force, things like this, creating or talking about uniform training standards statewide. Neither the chief has been engaged in some of that as well by making some of his concerns and recommendations known outside of this appointment, but there was some communication going on there as well. So congratulations on that.
Frankly, I was surprised after our presentation at the Amazon Conference when he worked us over there pretty good.
He did that. Just a reminder, well, probably not a reminder, some of you may have experienced this, but the maintenance of traffic for I-27033 when it was underway this morning with the closure of US 33 kind of just polled staff as to what we were seeing, hearing, or observing out there. It seemed to have gone well, all things considered, easy for me to say. I know that, you know, there were a lot of people involved in the traffic, but I just want to say to our traveling public out there how much we appreciate their willingness to adjust their time, to adjust their commute times, consider alternate routes, and of course, most of all, their patience and being safe when traveling through that interchange with these changes. So we'll continue to monitor that, and as you know, we're working very closely with ODOT on the management of traffic through that construction zone. Also regarding that, I just wanted to also acknowledge the effort regarding the Open for Business campaign that we have going on relative to not only the US 33, I-270 interchange improvements, but also Riverside Drive and State Route 161. I really want to thank some of our businesses who have taken the initiative to share information that we are putting out relative to brochures, links to our website, the ODOT website, and so forth. So as an example, Mike Salcone, owner of Bruegger's Bagels, at the shops at River Ridge, he's put together his own Dublin Traffic Information Center within his own shop. We really appreciate that. Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Doug Baker with Dublin City Schools are doing a lot of efforts to support our efforts and ODOT efforts and others. In fact, Merrill Lee sent us the notification that was sent out by Midwest Auto Group to their customers who would come there suggesting alternative routes and making them aware of the situation. And we know that other businesses are doing the same and promoting the Open for Business campaign, so I just wanted to thank all of them for doing that. Also want to thank everyone for the Memorial Tournament, really from my perspective, the staff, everyone did a great job, police, community relations, economic development, and so many others, our shuttle drivers. All I've heard back is great comments about the hospitality. I thought the city looked great, as good as it could, given all that we've got going on. I thought the staff did a great job with all the visitors coming to town and seeing our great city, so I'm very proud of all the effort that went on there. And I interacted with, as many of you did, with Dan Sullivan, the executive director, with the tournament several times, a couple of times a day practically, and they were very pleased with, of course, with all the support and effort. Just want to remind everyone that there's a town hall meeting, two town hall meetings tomorrow, one at 10:00 a.m., one at 7:00 p.m. That'll be held at the Abbey Theater at the Dublin Community Rec Center. The topics are, as you can imagine, transportation, construction updates, also some safety information from Chief Von Eckersberg, Chief O'Donnell, and some Bridge Street update. Again, that has to do with the information that we're putting out about that. that we're putting out about that, making sure that everyone understands the focus and intent of that effort. So, hope that people will come out for those two town hall meetings. And I will be out of town this, the rest of this week, and Michelle Crandall will be acting city manager. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dana. Bring us to council committee reports, planning, zoning. Amy?
I really don't have anything with regard to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Administrative committee, Rick?
We are current.
Very good. Community Development, John?
I just have a question for a note I got from, what's on here, from Jennifer. Are we pending the staff review and report to council before we meet? Is that the intent?
Oh, yes. We are researching all of that right now. We're still gathering information. We had a tentative preparation date of shooting for the July 1st council packet on that information, on the homeowners association, all of that information. We'll have that before the next meeting, the next Public Services Committee meeting. So, a couple different pieces of information coming out there.
We're not going to take any action against the Harder family till we reach a conclusion, Rick.
Right. Well, during this exploration of options for council in terms of code amendment, we are not actively enforcing, we're taking complaints and investigating individual situations, but, no, we're not actively enforcing that.
Okay. Good job winging it there, Jennifer.
Oh, God.
Okay, so-
Finance?
If I could clarify, though, we are going to have a memo from legal in time for our July 1st council meeting.
What we are working on, we're working with planning staff and public services to gather-
I understand it's not easy. I'm just asking.
Right.
And so, we would anticipate having the committee meeting sometime after that date.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
I just need to chime in. Thank you. So, I don't know how many of these situations exist, but, you know, is the communication such that, you know, people should not have heightened expectations? I mean, you know, this is, you know-
He said, "Don't count your chickens before they hatch."
Thank you.
Oh, God.
Yeah, we're currently benchmarking and gathering information, and we certainly wouldn't encourage anyone to go out and get poultry in anticipation of this. So, we're just not actively enforcing existing.
Let's get on with it. We done with that?
Thank you.
Mary Lee, do you have anything on finance?
No.
Thank you. Amy? Public services?
Nothing to report at this time.
John, DAC?
We're fine, thank you.
Okay. Greg? Board of Education?
Dana and I are meeting with the school folks on June 17.
We'll look for an update next meeting then. Morpsy? Mary Lee?
We have a meeting this week. Thank you.
US 33. There is some stuff, there is some activity there.
Yes, thank you. In your packets, there was a draft memorandum of agreement, and of course Dana did a very nice memo, you know, explaining how we've gotten to this point. Dana and I, and occasionally other staff, more often than not from engineering, have been attending these meetings on a monthly basis for several months now. But in any event, each of the respective legislative bodies are considering this memorandum of agreement. I guess I would direct your attention to, I mean, if your question is, you know, what it is, what is it that we are trying to accomplish here? I think it's summarized well in both the mission statement and the goals. And the goals, obviously, the subsections, I guess, being economic development cooperation, infrastructure, and planning coordination and collaboration. It, so I think if you read the document, you have questions, feel free to get ahold of either Dana or myself. I would just say that, again, you know, we've made efforts in this regard in the past. You know, Mike, of course, you've been involved in this, other council members have over the years, and I'll just say that what I sense is an unprecedented spirit of cooperation amongst the various jurisdictions here. It's very positive, and it's existed. There's also, with respect to Jerome Township, one of the newer trustees, I believe his name is Joe Kraft, right? First name Joe. He has recently joined the group, replacing trustee Ron Rhodes. So, anyway, everything's moving in a positive direction.
I can't think of a whole lot of things that are going to be more important than reading that memo and weighing in. Please add your comments, because it's a really important initiative that they're undertaking. We're finally making some headway. So, please read it, and if you get a chance in the next couple of weeks, weigh in on it. I know I will do that as well.
Yeah, I thought it was excellent, and I appreciate getting all this information. The only challenge I had was in the term resource sharing. So, as you come back to us with that, that concerns me, what I am assuming is the definition of that.
So, define it, basically. Give us definition there. Okay?
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Is that all? All right, then, that would bring us to council roundtable. Greg?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I have two quick items. The first is in the Red Trebutre Tree Arboretum. Interesting that that area would come up tonight. I noticed that a lot of the signage that were attached to the various trees or corresponding for the trees, the signs are no longer there. So, if we could maybe get those replaced. I know this was a Boy Scouts Eagle Scout project years ago.
It's happening right now.
Awesome.
So, it's, expect to see all the, even the old signs are being replaced with new ones, and the missing signs, obviously, are being replaced. So, that's all-
Perfect. That's a great answer, Fred. Thank you. Appreciate that. Second thing, I want to thank staff for the attention with regard to the Dublin Road South Shared Use Path. I had a meeting with the Homeowner Association of Llewellyn Farms, and obviously, those folks were very eager to see this path come to fruition, the remainder of it, I should say. And they were pretty disappointed to know that it wasn't going to get constructed this year, because that's sort of been the plan from the, well, from a few years ago. Anyway, I'm interested to see how things progress, and I just wonder, it says in here that we're considering bidding the project, and when might that decision be made? I notice the traffic counters out there.
Is this on? Yes. We had committed to looking and identifying any opportunity that may exist as the year goes on, and that's exactly what we're doing. So, we're monitoring the traffic counts. So, we took traffic counts last week, and then we're going to continue to do so for the next couple of weeks to see what all the other construction in the area, what kind of impact that has on Dublin Road. So, we'll be making some sort of a decision in the next couple of weeks. And we've also put together a couple of different maintenance of traffic options that we would like to bid to see cost differences and to see what the contractors say in terms of feasibility. So, I would say within the next few weeks, we'll have some sort of recommendation.
Okay. I appreciate that. I know council got some email traffic from those homeowners in Llewellyn Farms, and I know Rick has heard similar-
Yeah, I talked to a couple myself.
Yeah, from his neighbors as well. And I just want to bring it to council's attention. I don't know if anybody has availed themselves of our community police unit with regard to neighborhood traffic, but I've had a couple different situations that have come up, and I've brought that to the chief's attention, and he has asked his folks to get on it, and I know that they are, they do a great job, and I want to thank you for that, of getting out to the neighborhood, talking with the folks, and then monitoring situations and taking corrective action. So, I appreciate that very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Mary Lee?
I know that everybody got this preventing tobacco addiction, the 21 instead of 18, and you probably saw on the news that Upper Arlington, Bexley, and perhaps some other suburban communities are actually, might be addressing it tonight or last night. But I wonder if, I'm not sure what committee we have on council, or whether it's some other committee we have. I'd like to see this discussed in some arena and a recommendation be made to council on any direction if we should be taking some.
I'm sorry, Mary Lee, did you say the rest of us received this?
I think everybody got it, yeah.
Did it came in the mail a few weeks ago?
It's in the mailbox, I think.
It came from Dr. Crane.
It wasn't in the packet, but it was in the mail.
It was a couple weeks. I mean, I've had it for two or three weeks.
Okay. Yep. So-
In any case, I would agree with Mary Lee. That is something we should pay attention to.
Anybody have any ideas where they would send it? Do you think it would go to our community group?
Where would it go?
Huh?
Admin, since it's a law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so-
Congratulations.
There you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Other than to thank all of staff that was involved in supporting the Memorial Tournament, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Good. John?
Nothing.
Rick?
One thing. It is now time, or soon to be time, for those interested to sign up for the Citizens Police Academy. Two of us on council have attended, and you've heard me in the past, and you've heard Mary Lee as well. This is one heck of a class, and I would encourage a couple of members of council, or one, to see the chief and sign up.
Very good.
What night will that be held?
Thursday night.
It's on Thursdays.
I'm sorry?
It runs, what'd you say, 12 weeks?
13 weeks.
Thirteen weeks plus graduation.
And great food.
Okay. So, I do have some things this evening, quickly. Dana, the tournament is now over, and I continue to hear from Crossgate, although we told him it would be after the tournament. I know it's only a day, but I want to make sure we keep our eye on the ball on that, because we've got two or three issues. You have storage issues, you've got particulate issues, you've got whatever else. And I know that Dan had promised us to get involved in that. I'm sure the fence will be down by the required date, July 1, because Dan told me it would. So, we'll see to that. Also, just wanted to congratulate Sandra in Suburness, Sandra Biskarsik, Suburness, Lyndza Weisenauer, and Justin, Justin Q., for accepting the awards on behalf of the team at the Central Ohio Chapter's Prism Awards Dinner, May 7. And there was a number of different awards, five categories, including Dublin Life Magazine, Y Dublin Video Series, Employee Recognition, At Work, Winter Celebration, and the 2014 Annual Report. Great job, guys. Appreciate the effort on that. It's been a busy week or two between Dana and myself and some others here on council. I attended the Hadaka Matsuyama Breakfast, which had a host of other Japanese businesses in and around central Ohio at the pavilion. I spoke to a Taiko drum group at Davis Middle School, who's going to Mashika to play with their counterparts in that Japanese city. We had terrific Memorial Day events at the Grounds of Remembrance. I appreciate staff's efforts on all that. We did have a ceremony at the United States Post Office presentation for Captain Nicholas Rozansky and Lance Corporal Wesley-Davids, where they renamed the post office in their honor. And Congressman T. Berry was there, post office officials, Representative Duffy, and there was representatives from Lima Company and the National Guard. We had a general there, too, didn't we, as well?
We had two.
Two generals, including you?
Including me, yeah.
So, we had his boss there, so he had to be on his best behavior. We had the four miler race out there, and that's something that's going to need some attention next year. I think you all know that, because we heard an awful lot of comments about that. I know it was a very successful event. They had over 2,500 runners, as I understand it. And I'd be remiss if I didn't state that my daughter won the female, she was the number one female to finish, so hats off to Kate. We have, we had the tournament party, the CBS party. I know Mary Lee was there, and John, and Dana and others. Had a dinner the other night with the deputy fire chief from Kansas City in conjunction with IFEA program. I had a meeting tonight with Ben Katz, a Boy Scout, working on his citizenship badge. He asked a lot of questions, and we took care of the Japan issue. And we have the Blue Star Memorial, I believe, next Sunday. There'll be a presentation at the Dublin Cemetery for that. I have nothing else with that. We'll stand adjourned.